Call our meeting to order. Good to see everybody here today. Thank you for your interest in your county government. We really appreciate seeing everybody. Asked Mr. Mitchell if he'll do the invocation and Mr. Jamison if he'll do the pledge to the flag, if he'll all stand with us, please.
Thanks, everybody, for coming. It's good to see you. Bow your head, please. Dear gracious, lovely Father, thank you for the opportunity to come out and do the people's work here today. Thank you for the rain. Be with all the farmers. They start getting their crops in, and Lord just be with us as we make decisions for the betterment of our county in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me see your agenda. Thank you. All right. The agenda is there. Is there any amendments or deletions that we need to do to it?
Just I don't think we have to do the vote for Lori.
No, we don't have to do the remote floor. She's here as good as there. I'm glad she's back here with us and everything. I would like to make one amendment to the agenda. We need to change the order. Thinking on y'all's, it's got the parking rick first. We need to do the fire apparatus first, the memorandum of understanding, because we're gonna lose our county attorney, I think, around four, five o'clock. And so, let's do it. If you don't mind, let's... And I'll entertain a motion to amend the agenda that a way that we have it to do him in case he has to leave and we have to go in closed session. Mr. Tatum, you've got that right there. Somebody do a motion for me, please, that we change the order to fire apparatus first.
Mr. Chairman, will you make a motion to change the agenda to do the fire apparatus? You want me to put the order?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, six, five, say aye.
Aye.
All right. All right. Let's go into the fire apparatus and the memorandum of understanding. The envelope that you got. Staff. I know that you've looked through it and read it, and so... Have we got any questions? Do anybody have any questions for staff before we get the small phone? Let me make sure that thing's off. Sorry about that. You might've got any questions or anything for staff on this... These papers that we've got here? Or do you have any questions at all, period?
I have one in general. We're currently paying them $90,000 a year versus the volunteer units receive $26,000 per year. Chris and I talked about this. Just really trying to understand the basis for paying one unit $90,000 versus the other $26,000 as it relates to, you know, if we're paying them more per year based on that agreement, then you could consider part of that's going towards the fire apparatus. If everybody, if the other volunteers are receiving that for these other payments and it's all about equal, then you can really consider the fire apparatus on its own as a standalone decision.
I think to look at that, you'd have to look, compare the number of calls that the volunteers answer compared to the Rocky Mount Fire Department. And you start looking at the actual number of calls. I don't think there's gonna be any comparison to... I think it would more than justify the difference in the amount.
We also need to keep in mind that when the Rocky Mount calls go out, they go out and somebody else has to come into the town to take care of their calls for them as well. So that's another thing that's going on there to keep up with.
And if I could, again, make some clarification, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
For Mr. Quinn, the $90,000 that you mentioned, that's gonna fluctuate. It's not a $90,000 set in stone. Again, it's each quarter, it's 60%. Approximately, say, the last quarter was 60% of the calls outside the town boundary. The previous quarter may be 55%. You know, it's gonna fluctuate. The last couple of years, it just so happened to average out to be around $90,000. So the large portion of that $90,000 is really that percentage reimbursement for line of duty, insurance, fuel, whatever percentage of calls outside the town boundary that the Rocky Mount Volunteer Fire Department is running. If that brings some further clarity. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? How about down that hallway? Didn't the... Did you see the memorandum here from Mr. Whitlow in regards to the cost of the trucks? Anybody got any comments or questions on that? The two pages got memorandum at the top. There was some research done on what the surrounding areas and jurisdictions were doing in regards to their fire apparatus. And as you can see there, the summary that was, that came up. And then you can see these prices or these costs. They were Mondays, this past Monday, so when those prices were... They're very recent. I mean, they're, you know, they're within a week old. You got this. We got an extra one of these. We have an extra one of these packets that were given out. Would you please? I'll look on with Tim. I've got an extra. Okay. We got an extra one already. Thank you. Let's go back to the... Let's deal with the request from the town in regards to the two fire trucks. They've already ordered them. Let's take care of that first, the fire trucks. What... Well, I'll open the floor up for discussion. I don't have that, what they asked for, but they were asking for the ones that... How do you feel about this? What do you want to do?
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think I made my thoughts known with a previous proposal that I made with the town back in the fall. And at the time, there were a number of fellow supervisors that agreed with the proposal. Didn't feel it was perfect, but felt like it was a good compromise. And then, of course, things changed when the meeting comes around and some decided not to vote that way. But I feel that the town citizens are county citizens just like the rest of us. And right now, their county tax dollars go to pay for a fire truck that goes to Glade Hill. They go to pay for a fire truck that goes to Boone's Mill. Their county tax dollars goes for a fire truck that's in Tharum or Henry. But yet, their county tax dollars doesn't pay anything toward a fire truck in the town of Rocky Mount. And for that, I think that's an oversight on this board's part, and I think that it should be corrected. Now, the proposal, I know this board did approve a $50,000 a year for 20 years offer to the town, and the town turned it down. And basically, the proposal that I made later on was a compromise, split in the middle with what we had offered and what the town had asked for. I haven't changed my opinion on it, but that's just my opinion, Mr. Chairman.
I agree with what Mr. Tatum just said, and I'm not gonna rehash all this again. I've done, talked about it like 15 times. I am a little bit curious, going back to that memorandum page, Mr. Chairman, Bedford, Henry, and Pitt County. I'm curious how the counties pay in part the cost of these trucks and all this, and how are the volunteers making up the difference, how they're getting money? Do you have any insight on that, Mr. Whitlow?
Well, you did the research on that.
From what I understand, Mr. Carter, the balance of those trucks are paid for through donations, volunteer donations, fundraisers, and so forth, is by understanding and the research that our finance staff that we've done.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, if the board wants to go back and revisit this MOU and look into paying for capital expenses, I don't have a problem with that at all for the Rocky Mount Fire Department. They're not a part of public safety, but at the end of the day, I see them all the time. I have Ken folk that serve on there. I know they do a good job, and I'm not against them having what they need. But if that's what we're gonna do, we have to go back and revisit this MOU, because as you saw in the reading, we have another department in the county who's up wanting their asset replaced. We can't afford two and three of these things a year. And if we're gonna do that, we have to revisit the MOU, and even if they're not gonna be a part of public safety, they go into a rotation, just like everyone else, to keep the plane, to keep it fair for everyone. Because if we do it for one, we have to do it for all of them. And that's where I'm at on it. And I'm a little confused in the reading. It said that this was for a tanker truck, and I was under the impression the whole time that this was for a ladder truck.
I think they ordered two. One of them a tanker.
One was a tanker.
One was a tanker and one was a ladder truck, correct?
Yes, sir.
That what it was?
Yeah, one is a...
The tanker was the...
The tanker was ordered two years ago.
What if you...
The tanker was ordered two years ago prior to Mayor Holland.
The tanker was the one that was the 1.2?
1.165.
The ladder was 1.165, and the ladder was?
2.4. Don't quote me, I don't have it in front of me.
I understand.
Yeah, and the ladder was the most current, and it was... The town has, we've signed a purchase order. These things take forever to manufacture. So the tanker that Nick references was actually, it's been ordered for two years, and it's still not foreseen to come until the beginning of next year.
Okay.
So if that clarifies it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But, Mr. Chairman, if we want to go back and revisit the MOU, I'm fine with that. But, and I would go back to something that Supervisor Carter was saying a few weeks ago, that, and Chris really does good in this reading here about how, when they come to us and we need to purchase these things, we need to look at and have the option and look at other options and be able to, you know, right now, we're just getting hit with this, this is what it is, this is what we gotta do. And we need better options. I can't make good decisions for my constituents based off of, here it is, this is what we gotta have, you gotta do it. And, you know, go back and look at the MOU and go from there, but that's where I'm at on it.
Well, if you look there in the memorandum, and that's what you were talking about, the price of the tanker, it's a whole lot different than what they've paid for theirs. Now, I do know that pictures that Mr. Whitlow has of the tankers, the biggest thing that I saw, they were Pierce trucks, some of them, and different, but they, it's almost like 1,500 gallons, and I think the one that they ordered was 2,500 gallons. So that makes it a little bit better.
Just to clarify what Supervisor Mitchell was referring to, what I was talking about is public safety coming in here to order a truck, and they've got, we gotta get this Pierce arrow, if we don't order it today, it's going up $500,000 tomorrow. I am not gonna vote for that anymore, ever again. I want to see at least two, possibly three choices, and have some time to talk about. I'm not gonna be forced and strong-armed into purchasing these trucks spur of the moment like that, because it's getting totally out of hand. We're facing a historical tax season with a huge reassessment, and people are coming out of the woodwork complaining about these taxes. Well, when we make purchases like this, that's what drives those taxes.
Correct.
And I would also be curious as to what the town plans to do with their tax rate. I haven't heard anything on... I know they advertised for the full amount, but I haven't heard what their, what direction they're going on that. And I'll yield back, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Does that open up any other discussion? Well, I, what I was saying, I was gonna make, say the same thing that Mr. Carter said, being strong-armed anymore. I wasn't gonna vote for that, because I think, I don't think that's fair to the taxpayers. And then, actually, piggybacking off of Mr. Mitchell as well, I said that I wasn't gonna vote or go for anything, because they weren't gonna become, they didn't want to become part of the county system. And I rethought that, and I'm not so sure that that's a fair statement. That's their business, they're there in the town. But there's nothing that says that we can't put them on our rotation for the trucks, period. I mean, we can do the same thing and just put a slot in there for the town of Rocky Mount on the rotation, and that's what Mr. Mitchell was talking, and a couple others have talked about. So we could just do that ourself, and then if it comes back up for another truck, well, it's not your time yet, you know, we do the rotation. I've been thinking about this ever since our meeting, and I know you all said, and I made the statement at our last meeting, that the school said something that I thought I'd never lived to see today, when they said, here, you can have some money back, and we've got plenty. I just, it still blows my mind that they said that. But with that being said, I'm glad and thankful that they did. But for my part, what I've been thinking, they gave that, was that 1.2 million back that was ours. They'd buy that one truck, buy it, give it to the town, and be done with it. It's, you know, take that 1.2 million, buy the truck, and just be done with it. Ms. Smith?
I may, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, go ahead.
So, you know, I'm a pretty pragmatic thinker. I think for my part, and it's what I've said from the beginning, is that the MOU needs to fundamentally be thoroughly reviewed, and suggestions or changes to the MOU be suggested by Rocky Mount and by Franklin County and mutually agreed on. As I have continued to think through and seeing some of these numbers today and some of this packet, kind of reinforces my thinking. I think if we could come up with, within the confines of the MOU, a way that Franklin County would provide a percentage of funding on an apparatus when it's due for funding, not necessarily considering it's in our rotation for purposes of just this conversation, but a percentage of funding an apparatus based on that year's call volume, or if you want to look at it on a five-year trend, so that, like we do with the $90,000 versus the $26,000, the purpose of that was to acknowledge the service that's provided by Rocky Mount to Franklin County, you know, in general, for services. So, you know, I definitely agree with what some of my colleagues have said with regard to, you know, if we're gonna participate in any funding at any level with Rocky Mount, that, you know, it would be stipulated for criteria, as we do with our rotation schedule, at what point in time, you know, would be inappropriate, is the apparatus due for replacement, in other words. But I would rather us deal with a percentage of a purchase price based on data than just blindly giving them a million dollars. If we were just to turn that 1.2 over, we're doing it in an arbitrary way, and we don't have a mechanism set up to say that's why we did it, that's how we did it, but we're gonna lay an expectation for the future, and it needs to be data-driven, and it needs to be policy-driven. And so I would rather us set up the apparatus percentage contribution through the MOU and let staff look at the mechanism of how that would work, so that, you know, fundamentally and simplistically put, at the end of the day, Rocky Mount is being properly compensated. You know, we're doing it with the other piece, the $90,000, but then on the apparatus side, it's when you bring in the capital piece, but it'd be more specifically articulated, and, you know, requiring the MOU to be redone where it exempts capital in the MOU.
Leadbetter, see?
Yeah. Mr. Leadbetter.
Mr. Mailerbed, will you come up, please? I thought that was you that snuck in back there.
I snuck in the back door.
He was back there. When y'all do the, when the chiefs, and y'all go around and do the asset, the trucks, and look at them and do your replacement, is the town involved in that at all, or do y'all skip them?
We don't, and it's just because the county's never funded their trucks. They could absolutely be done. We could do, we could do it under the same criteria and use the same algorithm, everything we used on the, when we did all the county trucks.
County trucks.
And I'm just gonna say this. I know everybody talks about putting them in the county rotation. My opinion, and the opinion of most of the chiefs, is that's not a good idea.
Well, I think that we just took care of that.
And that's just because they have so many trucks, it's gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna have to go to buying two and three trucks a year if you do that. If not, we're gonna get so outdated on trucks, and we're gonna, we're gonna cause a bigger issue. But as far as evaluating their trucks, yeah, we could absolutely do it. We haven't done it, but we could if y'all desired.
That's just a question. I was just wondering if they did.
But it's just like with this tanker truck, they're actually given, they're getting rid of two trucks and purchasing one. They're taking two trucks out of their stable and putting one back that better serves the town of Rocky Mount and Franklin County, because they're getting rid of two smaller trucks that carries less water. They'll have more truck, more water on this one truck, three times the amount of water as either one of the other two. So they're, they're being pretty conservative about this, because like I said, they actually gave up two trucks to, just to replace one. And that one truck will benefit everybody in the county, talking about the tanker most especially.
How, the new truck, you know, we've talked about this before, about the bridges. Can it cross the bridges?
It'll cross, essentially, it'll cross anything that, it won't cross them all, but we also have, I mean, my tanker in Tharum won't cross them all.
It won't cross them all either.
You know, so they're not, it's gonna carry 500 more gallons of water than what my truck does, what most of the trucks in the county carry. But it, in the grand scheme of things, it's not, it's nothing to be concerned about. They'll cross anything, basically, I can cross.
Okay. Does that open up any questions for anything else?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Leadbetter, right now, I think the county's policy has been, I know it has been in the past as far as funding on trucks, they basically, the county will pay for what NFPA requires on a truck, and then anything that's considered accessories that individual departments currently pick that up. Is that still kind of the way it's been done?
Basically, again, all the chiefs got together, I'd say, five-ish years ago, and set kind of a standard spec for a tanker and a standard spec for engine. And then, basically, what we said is, this is kind of the minimum, this is what everybody needs to have, and then if you get way over and above this, then that's where you kind of figure out, you know, who's gonna pay for what. And that's kind of the way we've done it for the last six or eight years, the trucks have been bought. And I'll use our engine for an example. Basically, it's, you know, it's a thousand gallon pump, a thousand gallon tank, 1,500 gallon a minute pump. And we set the county spec on engines being custom cab trucks, because they are safer, they carry more people, they have advantages that a commercial cab truck doesn't have. But, so that was kind of the way we set that spec. And then, when, and again, I'll use our truck for an example, we wanted to change the color on it, which, you know, means nothing to actually fighting the fire, so we came up with the money to do that. We didn't ask the county for that. We came up with that money. You know, that's kind of the way we've done it. Anything over and above, we let the individual agencies figure out how they wanted to pay for it.
Well, we got Franklin County on that one.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yes, I thought so.
Yep. But, and I will say, in all of this, all the chiefs have pretty much agreed that our feeling is the county should fund the truck for Rocky Mount. I mean, everybody's in agreement with that. You're not gonna get a bunch of pushback from all the other volunteer agencies, because it's, you know, they're a lifesaver to all of us. It's, with their manpower and the response that they have is a lifesaver to the other departments. If they can show up with 3,000 gallons of water to help me, I'll take it every time.
I don't think there's no argument from the board.
Oh, I don't think so. I just wanted, I just wanted y'all to...
I don't think there's no disagreement with nothing there.
I just wanted y'all to know that we all back on that this ought to be done.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all.
I have one comment, Mr. Chairman. I know, understand we're getting a new director of public safety's been hired, gonna start April the 8th, not necessarily involving this fire truck, but I think he should have some skin in the game when constructing this memorandum of agreement moving forward.
Right. I agree. I think so, so... I agree with you. I've seen everybody shaking their head on that, I think so. We don't have to, well, we can't make the decision today, because we need to go back into the executive, you know, but we can, that's what we're here for, is to talk about. It's, I think Mr. Leadbetter put some light on that. These trucks here, sure is a lot of difference that y'all noticed in this memorandum, the difference in the prices. Big difference. And these prices were just gotten within the last week. Mr. Mitchell?
And on that, Mr. Chairman, I believe it should, that should be something going forward for all departments, not just, and when I discuss these things, I'm not saying Rocky Mount, I'm not picking on any certain one. We need to be a level playing field for everyone. So how we're gonna fund this one needs to be how we're gonna fund that one, and so on and so forth. And I get what he's saying about it not being in the rotation, but at the end of the day, there has to be a strategic, kind of what Lori was saying, something strategic as to how we go about it. It can't just be a make it happen.
Well, you know, we discussed this two or three meetings ago, if you recall, doing a basic truck. They wanted Wilson some bales, they had to pay for it. Remember that discussion?
Mr. Chairman, that's kind of what, in the past, what the county did. Basically, took whatever the NFPA standard was for that truck, and that's what the county, I know that goes back to when Rick Huff was here, and Chris Slimp, I mean, you remember Mr. Slimp? That was one thing that they did, and then that was back in, that was in the early 2000s, so it goes back a while. I don't know, you know, I think that designing the standard truck, you know, NFPA puts out a national standard. Well, that national standard might be fine for Iowa or Indiana where it's flat, but they're taking consideration our heels. So I want to make sure that whatever the standard we have, that our fire association, our chiefs have input, because they know, they know what they need. And it, you know, I think NFPA can put out a standard, but I think our chiefs and our fire association need to have input as well, as far as what they need, because they know. because they know.
And then another thing that was brought to my attention, Smith and I, we were invited down to Burn Chimney, and got a pretty good insight. One of the things that was brought out down there, especially with the turnout gear and the equipment, here in the county, it's not beat up as bad and not used as much as it would be like in Roanoke, or Norfolk, or Richmond, or New York City. It's, you know, where they're constantly, constantly going, you know, and maybe there. So, some of those standards, even though they got three, or seven years old, they've not been used nowhere near, like it would been if it had come from one of the cities and everything. So that, that all, that all needs to be kept, I think, in mind too. But, yeah, I agree with you when you was talking about the new chief. Ms. Smith?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to ask Mr. Whitlow, just for my refreshing of the issue. In 2020, which was when this MOU was executed, what was the rationale behind exempting capital?
Ms. Smith, I can't recall the specific rationale of exempting capital. I think it was just understood between the town and the county at that time, between the staff and the council and the board, that this was really operational expenses and non-capital. As Rocky Mount Volunteer Fire Department has had a storied, you know, independent history of the county not falling under public safety, and then they've done, you know, an excellent job, I guess, through the years, funding their, their building that, that they're, they're in, all of their apparatus and so forth, but I can't specifically say that, you know, there was a long discussion of, other than the fact that was understood clearly that it would be non-capital.
Okay, thank you.
Does that open up any more questions or anything? All right, well now, as far as the memorandum of agreement, we can start, we can start going through that right now, or, or you can take these home with you, this little packet that we've got, and make your notes on these, and then we can come back and either rewrite this or restructure it in a meeting at, in another meeting, in another workshop, and I think, I think we need to maybe get staff to go through here and, but the numbers, I think, are, especially these call numbers, he just did those, this just came out of the CAD system, but...
Mr. Chairman?
I think the way that it was written, that it's, it covers everything, it does take care of the needs. Mr. Whitlow?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I may, in terms of, I know our county attorneys here, and I think, Mr. Quinn, you've probably had a chance to take a look at the MOU and so forth, and I would just, you know, lend the floor to maybe our, our county attorney as to any modifications to, to an MOU.
Mr. Quinn, are you comfortable with talking in here, or you wanna, do we need to go in closed session?
With what I'm getting ready to tell you, I am.
Okay.
Which is this, the memorandum of agreement was originally a product of negotiation, and with all due respect, you're not gonna be able to negotiate much if we're gonna do it out here in public.
That's all right.
Right.
That's all right.
So perhaps a closed meeting to discuss exactly the terms that you're talking about would be appropriate, and maybe next meeting or whatever, but when you do decide to do it, you probably need to, is it A29, I think, that talks about the expenditure of public funds and not giving away your negotiating position. I think that would be a more prudent course.
A29. Well, I got, I got a question that I think we need to go into closed session on that, to talk about that, so, Mr. Tatum, will you make a motion?
All right, Mr. Chairman, Franklin County Board of Supervisors will motion to enter into a closed meeting in accordance with 2.2-3711A7, consultation with legal counsel or briefings by staff about litigation or other specific matters requiring legal advice in A29, discussion of the terms of a public contract of the Code of Virginia as amended.
Need a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you do a roll call, please?
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes.
Back there, yes, so, it says viable back. Hey?
The AC. All public business matters lawfully exempted from the meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session to which this certification applies, and only such business matters as were identified in the motion by which this closed session was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting to which this certification applies.
I need a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you do a roll call vote on that, please?
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes.
Hey, folks, the Franklin County Board of Supervisors just authorized staff to start into negotiations with a new memorandum of understanding for our contributions to purchase of fire apparatus for the Rocky Mount Volunteer Fire Department. All right. Next order of business, tourism and ag fair. Kevin, you and Paul are on the seat now. Have you got a, where's my paper at? Excuse me. See you, buddy. Thank you, thank you. Have you got a statement, sir?
Absolutely. We, we actually have a presentation that will kind of help walk us through some of the questions that were posed in the worksheet that we sent with the board last week. So if it's okay, go ahead with the presentation.
Yes, sir.
If there's any questions as we go through it, it will definitely be an interactive presentation, so. So kind of looking at what the presentation's gonna go over, we're gonna look at some of the completed and scheduled improvements for the fairgrounds. We're gonna discuss the responsibilities associated with the fair and the fair committee. We will look for some interaction and some insight on a mission statement and purpose of the fair, for goals and key performance indicators for the fair. We'll look at possible future funding models for the fair, and then next steps and future planning, which will be that three, five, and 10-year planning for the fair. So as we talked about a couple of weeks ago, with some of the remaining funds left over in the ag fair budget, I was able to get with some folks from the Agricultural Development Board, we looked at some of the needs that were kind of pressing on our existing facility, and we marked off two different items that we could get done fairly efficiently and in a quick turnaround. One of those was removing a couple of trees behind the large shelter, which would allow trucks and trailers to more easily turn around with livestock and with other options. You'll see there the trees that we're, they're actually already cut down, this has been completed.
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
This gravel road, is this the gravel road right behind the building that's already there?
Correct, yes. And so the, the trees will be removed, and then with some remaining funds, we're gonna look to add some gravel back there to make it a little bit easier. But that particular tree cutting has already been completed, and we're happy to say we're well on our way for that portion. The other portion that we heard was the need for water, additional water access there at the large shelter. And so I've got a couple of photos here, this project is looking to be completed here fairly soon. So this is looking at the left side of the large shelter. The, the nearest red spigot will be a new spigot that will be installed. The, the red spigot on the backside there is an existing spigot. When you look down the opposite side, we're gonna be adding two new spigots down that right side, mostly that will be for the midway, so that they won't be having to utilize the water access on the far side of the shelter. Inside of the shelter, the two in the back are existing water accesses, but we'll be adding a third inside. This will aid in livestock shows and feeding of livestock during the fair. And then this is kind of the wider view, and there's an existing water access there on the right side. So there'll be four accesses for water inside the large shelter, there will be two accesses outside on the left, and two accesses outside on the right for water accesses, and those improvements are scheduled to be completed here in the near future. So we're very excited about that. So kind of looking at the philosophical questions that we've kind of posed to the board, our assistant county administrator, Ms. Rosser, kind of had this idea of, you know, who's driving this tractor, you know? Who's responsible for the ultimate vision, planning, and outcome of the Franklin County Agricultural Fair? And this is where the interactive portion of the, the presentation will be, is where does this board see the ultimate responsibility of the fair? Who, who's driving the tractor, so to speak? I would pose that question to the board for, for any input that you have, because it will be pertinent to the, the rest of the questions that we'll have.
Well, for my, my part, I think that comes under your purview. Well, for my part there, that's, anybody else? Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Kevin. For, for me, I think as long as there's county tax dollars involved, needs to be some county staff involved, but I would like for the ag committee to, to play a bigger role in helping you or assisting you, or however you want to utilize them moving forward.
So that would be the, the ag development board, so.
Anyone else got any comment or thing?
Mr. Chairman, I had given Kevin some comments last night via email, but I do see, you know, you, Kevin, with Brandy, you know, kind of partnering in a leadership capacity. Your fair committee, I think, is integral to keep all the pressure off of you, which has been a one-man show to date. And I had suggested, for purposes of my colleagues, that we perhaps have a couple members on that committee from the ag board, potentially a couple supervisors, two citizens at large, make, you know, no more than about a group of about 10 people or so that's manageable, but just being very selective, so that this could be a working group versus just a group sitting around and hearing what staff's doing. I mean, I think you need workers that are, you all are gonna be able to sit around, define scope, define, you know, master planning this event moving forward and those types of things.
Well, I, what I said a while ago, I, I agree with the board, but I think Mr. Tosh needs to be the one in charge of that, county, county staff from the county, that the board and his advisory board, his helpers, they got nothing but that, but I think it needs to stay in the county. We don't need to turn it over to nobody, because you're the one that has to come back to present to the board from where the, the dollar's coming from, the taxpayers. So I think everybody's, Mr. Carter? Everybody's shaking their head there, that if you want, if you want to do a board, that's fine, wouldn't hurt to have a couple members off the, this board on there, just so we can know what's going on, to come back to the board, to keep everybody apprised of what it is. But, yeah, I think we're all saying the same thing.
Perfect. And that kind of goes along with the second, the portion here, that, you know, there was an existing ag fair committee that has went through different iterations over the years from its original inception of more than 25 or 30 members in 2014 to, we had our most recent meeting on last week, and we had five individuals that were there. So we, we saw that kind of dwindle down. I guess the, the question would be, is there, do we see a need for this, what has been known as the Agricultural Fair Committee? Is that still needed? Is it an advisory group? Is it a governing group to the fair? What are the responsibilities? I guess, moving forward, what does this board want to see from, from a sense of an agricultural fair committee?
From what, the meetings we've had with Farm Bureau and, and comments I've heard is people want to see it going toward more of a livestock, more of a farm-based show. And I think in order to do that, we have to move toward having a facility set up for showing livestock, whether it's cattle, whether it's horse shows, whatever it is. And I think all of this conversation we're having is just to go around to the fact that we have to have a place designated for livestock. Setting up panels there where Kevin's showing, that's great, because I know they need the water, but setting up panels to bring in a sheep and a pig and a, and a cow is one thing, but people want to see ropings and cuttings and horse shows and barrel racing and stuff, and that, I think that's the direction the county needs to be going, is a facility set up for that. And that would solve all these problems.
Mr. Tosh, can you go back three or four slides to where the, where you was showing the water in the building? Keep going. Keep going. The other side, that side, right there. All right. You wouldn't have to cut, but just three or four trees right there. We met with some of the ag people, Kevin and I did, you wouldn't have to cut with three or four trees right there, and you could build another building, or add on to this building, the exact same size. And the, with the ag committee, they said that they could get the panels, and they really wanted to use the panels, if I understand correct, they wanted to use the panels so that they could configure the building as it was needed. The backside of the existing building has gravel in it, so that they can do the livestock. Now, the, what, what you were just talking, we'll talk about that, with if you wanted to have like a, a rodeo, I don't think there's nobody here. There was a committee of us that went to Patrick County, I went down there on that. They've actually got a field in the back, and they did exactly what you were talking about, when their, their fair was in there. They had a rodeo, I'm not gonna say they had it every night, but they had it about every night they had the fair. They had some kind of an event, whether it was roping, bull riding, and things of that nature. The one thing that I can tell you that, but it can be done, I'm not saying nothing can't be done, the liability insurance, you don't have to get a waiver signed and things like that, but all that can be done, all that can be done. And I think, I think that's, got your tractor pull, you got your tractor pull down there, I think the rodeo aspect of it, I know that, especially in this county, would draw a pile of people.
Well, and that could be used for more than just the ag fair. I remember when they used to have the horse show down there in Sontag, back when I was a little kid, and that was a big deal. And I think you could get back to a lot of that, and that, because there's people that leave Franklin County, go down to the Saddle Club and Patrick, down there, Patrick Henry Saddle Club, they go all over the place to go to that stuff, and we could have it here. And I think when people talk about the ag fair, they want to see it more focused on livestock and things of that sort. And I, I think that, that is the answer to our question, is moving in that direction.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I, I agree 100% with what Mr. Mitchell said. I think that, prime example, just go down to Gretna to the Old Dominion Ag Center, whenever they have their events, you can see what a drawing it has for not just that community, but from camp people, I met people down there from Campbell County, Albemarle County, of course Franklin County, you know, it's thousands, you know, 15, 20,000 people there. And I, I don't know that we're ready to build a, a building facility, but all that can be done outdoor, you don't have to cover it. And I think, you know, I, I love the idea, I think that we need to work with Paul and his staff and come up with a good location to, to put that in, and, and start making plans with it. Of course, you got to take into consideration seating and, and lighting, and all that has to come into play, but I love the idea.
There's a facility in Buckingham that, that I'm gonna call, and I'm gonna set it up, and we're gonna ride down and look at it.
We ain't, we ain't gotta go that far, not, not this coming Saturday, because this coming Saturday, they're gonna be in Dublin. But Saturday next, they're gonna be down on Brooks Mill Road, at Dale Simmons' farm, it's gonna be, and you're gonna see cars there from North Carolina, Tennessee, and everywhere, they're having a huge roping, pole bending, and, and barrel racing. And we ain't gotta go, we ain't gotta go out of the county. Last Saturday, it was in Bedford County down at Broken Bow Arena, and we, it, it's all over the place, and it, it's already, it's already there. And it's, it's all over the place and it, it's already, it's already there. And it's, we got the perfect area already. All we got to do is drain that pond. Drain that pond and you got the perfect area right there and you got seed and it goes right down to it. That's, I know a lot of people don't want to see that pond drained, but I've been worried about that pond. But anyway, that, you got that there. Any more? I'm sorry, Kevin.
No, you're fine. So back to the Agricultural Fair Committee. What, is there any direction you would like staff to take moving forward?
I think the Ag Committee, for me, would be more an advisory committee than anything. I think as far as the governing goes, I think that's what you and, and staff is for and this board. But I think the Ag Fair Committee is more of an advisory and that's just me.
I agree.
So moving forward with that in mind, with the individuals that were at the Ag Fair Committee and speaking with the Agricultural Development Board. One of the, the big questions that they do have for this board is, you know, what is the, the mission statement? What is the purpose of the Franklin County Agricultural Fair? Because that really will help guide our decisions that we make. It will help put, you know, a fence around it, so to speak, that we can move in a certain direction that is based on what this board wants to see the Agricultural Fair to be. And an example of that, you know, Antique Farm Days happens there at the fairgrounds. But with their mission statement, you know, you can read it there. But pretty much it's to preserve the farm machinery, the equipment and to educate people on the equipment. So everything that they do is directly involved and directly goes back to the farm equipment and implementation. So with that thought in mind, what would you say as a board? And it could be seven different answers, but you know, what is a, a mission statement? What is the purpose that you would like to see that the Agricultural Fair accomplishes each year as kind of a, an overarching mission statement?
Speaking for me, I think it needs to be a time that we celebrate our farming heritage here in Franklin County. Both techniques of the past and present and future. Because farming is, I mean, it's a lot of our history, but it's also a lot of current. And it had better be our future or there's going to be a lot of hungry people. So I, I'd like for it to, you know, let's look at the past, let's celebrate the past, let's identify the future, I mean, the present and let's also look forward. So I think that, that could come into play, that's for me.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I would like to piggyback on Mr. Tatum. I think the fair, you know, I, I know that it's somewhat of a signature event, but just since I've been on the board, you know, when we had trouble with the, you know, getting the rides and all and so forth. I, I would like to see this be a permanent signature event of Franklin County that we commit to and we properly fund and resource it. We master plan it so that we can grow with expectations along with appropriate resources along the way. But I think that if we establish this as a signature event to celebrate our rural heritage and our farming, our farmers and farming and everything that goes with that. I think that if we do that, we'll have an opportunity to bring other partners into this in participating in terms of, you know, potentially some nonprofit organizations, churches, et cetera, that we could really just kind of broaden that umbrella, if you will, to broaden the scope of the fair, to meet some of the things, Kevin, that I know that you've heard from this board just anecdotally over time. But I think that we do it and, and we're trying to get it right. But I want to see us be more deliberate about getting it right. And if we need a new building, if we need a new location, if we need to invest some capital monies in infrastructure. I would like to see this board tackle that decision so that we can put meaning behind this fair every year and that the citizens and especially our region knows that this is going to be a really special thing that Franklin County does every year and that we do it extraordinarily well and it's got something for everyone.
I know, I generally save my comments to the end, but I, while it's here, because I agree with what both of my colleagues have said. But I would like to see in that mission statement and also in the fair. I like the animals and all of that, but I would like to see it incorporated, you know, we got two canneries. And it is being used to preserve food that is being grown on these farms. And I like to see, I, I know the animals are important and, and they're a harsh, a huge part of it. There's probably been more cows in the county than there are people. I have no doubt about that. But that, but we need to incorporate the preserving of the food and the canning and, and, and show our real culture. The old ways, but it's still, I mean, you try to go during canning season and try to buy some jars and lids and they're hard to come by. And incorporate all of that in our mission statement there. I'm sorry for butting ahead. Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One thing I would like to see included in the mission statement is the FFA to involve the youth of the county because that's the foundation of future farmers and I think that's, that's really important. And I agree with what Tim and the others said. It would be to showcase the agriculture in Franklin County historically and current. Now, how you want to hammer all that out, Kevin, I don't know.
You're the wordsmith. Anyone else? Gentlemen? Did that answer your question?
It does. And it leads us kind of into the next and you've kind of already hit on this. So looking at the idea of promoting our agricultural heritage, both past, present and future and the various aspects of it. And really you've already answered this question. If it's okay, I'll go to the next slide. That these were some of the ideas in fut, in past board meetings I had heard. So obviously at the top of the list there, promotion of agriculture being a primary goal of the fair. Education and awareness of, you know, past and present and future opportunities in agriculture. Community engagement with our local churches and our local nonprofits. Youth development through the showing of livestock and participation, whether it be FFA, the 4-H, opportunities like that. Obviously being a signature event, the entertainment and quality of life aspect. And then the economic boost to our small businesses and local producers. So if, if it's okay with this board, I, I feel like that kind of wrapped up everything that you guys just said, that these, we could informally adopt these as kind of the goals of the fair, if that is the pleasure of this board. I think it kind of encapsulated what you just went through.
Just, just as a follow-up, a long-term goal, a larger goal, a permanent venue, a bigger permanent venue for livestock. I think that's, that's going to have to happen down the road.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Kevin, one of the things I forgot to touch on, you know, when I look at some of the events that goes on in Roanoke as an example. There are entities in our region like Corrillian. I mean, Virginia Tech, et cetera. You know, I think that we could do some underwriting of this fair, you know, getting some of these larger entities to underwrite the fair. And, you know, and there would be some type of partnership agreement where, you know, they would get marketing, advertising in lieu of, you know, their support on an annual basis if they're not in their view, something like that. But where they would have a financial contribution to Franklin County. And I think that we could achieve that. I, I would be optimistic that we could do that because even if you think about, you know, the board I serve on, Roanoke County, you know, we can do something that they can't do, right? So it makes sense that we collaborate and that we try to take what we have, the assets we have here, bring them in as part of it. Have them be, you know, contributing party and, and the money, you know, we, we might be able to resource more things with our fair if we can establish these types of sponsorships or partners, if you will. But that, and I understand that takes an effort all within itself, but I, you know, sponsorships, that kind of thing. But I think, you know, part of the fair, the entry could be, you know, the Corrillian, you know, just some namesake of, you know, parts of the fair. So that was, that's just a suggestion to try to grow our revenue sources.
Absolutely. So we'll move forward with that. Just a couple of, of opportunities we had discussed, as you said, future funding models. You know, ways that we can continue to utilize the funds that the board has graciously given us each year. With this year after the improvements to the fairgrounds, looks like there will be around $30,000 left in that account. You know, in talking with county administration, there may be opportunities to, to roll that over in future years, whether it be for operational, to do some of these things that we're looking to do. Or whether it be to roll it over into a capital fund that can fund some of these capital projects that's related to the fair and the fairgrounds. So those are some things to be kind of thinking of as you continue your budget discussions that, as Ms. Smith said and as Mr. Mitchell said, kind of being deliberate with what we do and having that end goal in mind. So that's just something to think of as you, you continue to move forward, that, I mean, the 75,000 that you put in each year over the past two years, there's been money left in that account that we could then repurpose with a, a specific goal for the fair. So just keep that in mind. So kind of next steps moving forward, you know, obviously our fair will be quickly approaching on August the 14th through the 17th of this year. We're looking to complete those improvements that are included in this year's budget, which is the clearing of the trees and creating of that turnaround and inclusion of the additional water access. If there are any other capital improvement projects that this board sees fit that we can get done, whether it be with the remaining funds or moving into the next budget cycle, keeping in mind that the new fiscal year starts in July and the, or fair will be in August, so there will be a quick turnaround there, whatever the pleasure of the board is. But also taking the feedback back today and crafting a mission statement utilizing the goals that we talked about and the structure that we talked about. So the, the input of the board has very much been appreciated. But in talking with Mr. Whitlow and county staff, we believe it would be in the best interest of this board and for the Agricultural Fair to come back in September. So the fair will be fresh in our mind, it will be just happened and hold a work session in September, which would look towards that future planning, that three, five, 10-year planning as well as capital planning for the following years. FY '25, '26 budget to kind of lay that framework and that master plan down for the fair. We think it would give us a full 11 months to get some of the larger capital projects that you may want to undertake completed. But we believe that that would be the, the best course of action moving forward is implementing the thoughts from today into this year's fair as much as possible. But then coming back in September to really get that three, five, 10-year plan nailed down.
I think, I think that's important. I see everybody shaking their head, yes. I do know, Kevin, that we talked about earlier in our last meeting. I think it's important that this year we got, if we got some money left and if not, we'll, we'll have to discuss maybe some appropriations. But I think working out there at the front, like I did, several of these other members. It was a lot of discussion down that road. We need to get some benches in for handicap. Those folks were coming in there and, you know, walked so far and then they were coming in and out. And we need to get that entrance and exit worked on so they're not coming in and out of the same road all the time. That, and for all of you that were there that worked, I mean, everybody shaking their head. That was, that was the biggest complaint or suggestion, however you want to put it, the lighting, the lighting and the benches for handicap. That's important. And then Paul, how, how big is that park? How many, how much land is there?
That's a good question. I couldn't tell you right off the top of my head how many acres it is.
It's a whole lot of, it's undeveloped too. In trees, that's, that's in trees and then we got parking across the road.
That's right. There's that area across the road and pretty much the, the grassy area is areas that can be developed. There's a concert, the wooded area around the perimeter of the park is in a conservation easement. But everything that's pretty much grass is, can be, is, could be developed relatively easily.
Okay.
What about the trees in between where the, where you come into where the Ag Fair is and then there's a swag of trees and you have the baseball fields and stuff?
Those are also in it, yeah. The only trees that, to, to be clear, there's some trees that, that back access road, like behind the pavilion. Those, those trees, like where Antique Farm Base has, like their different shops, that kind of thing, those trees could be removed. But those trees between, right next to the baseball field, those are the, it's a little peninsula that's in the conservation easement. Yeah, I have a, I have a map of that if anybody would care to see it. Not all me, but I could provide it if, if needed.
Yes?
Just two quick things, Kevin. So one minutia, but you have the new hydrants and it would seem good to have some big pylons outside of those so they didn't, don't get hit by a vehicle. And then the second thing was as the fair gets bigger, and I think back to last year where you had the tent. It's going to become more attractive to vendors and the tent configuration wasn't really attractive to vendors because it was way off on the side and, and nobody knew what was going on or who's in there. And, and I think if you had kind of forced the people to go through the tent either before they paid or after they paid and before they got into the fair, I think it could become really attractive to more vendors, larger scale vendors, and that could be another revenue source for you.
Yeah, agreed. Definitely. We've discussed that and have taken that into consideration.
After you said that, Quinn, when we went down into Patrick County, you had to get your tickets right there as you go in. And before you could even go through the fair, you had to go through a building like the tent that you were talking about. Where they had all of the vegetables and flowers.
That'd be perfect.
You had, you had to go through there.
Yeah, exactly.
You couldn't get in without going through that. And that was at the Patrick County Fair Store. Yeah, yeah.
All I have? There's any other questions or any other input that you would like, especially for this year's fair as we are already well in the throes of, of planning it?
Is, is it beyond the realm of possibility that we can get this all set up so it's the same time every year?
It is, it is 100% possible.
I think that's important.
And, and we, as staff have, have also talked about following this year's fair. If it would be who of us to, to put it out to RFP to see if we can get multiple respondents, you know, with a specific date in mind. Maybe see what options are out there or to see if we are limited to the, the current options that we have. But that is definitely a short-term goal of mine is to get a specific date nailed in year after year, no questions. And yes.
Yeah.
So that, that's, that's the ultimate goal. That's not outside of the realm of possibility and we hope to make that a reality.
Has anybody got any other questions, budget questions that, that may have arisen or anything for, for Mr. Tosh?
Kevin, I would say for my part that, you know, because the timing of the fair with, with the fiscal year starting July 1st, it's awkward at best. If you are finding yourself that you need to do some things that are on your radar, especially from a logistical or infrastructure perspective and your funds are not holding up, please, I mean, I would think this board would want to know that. You know, it's, it's, we are very, you know, what I hear today is, is just unilateral, you know, significant support for the fair and your work. And so it's our responsibility to make sure that you have the resources that you need to pull off what we're asking you to do. Mr. Chairman, I hope that's okay.
Sure. That, that's, I believe that's the consensus of the board. If you need something to pull this event off. I mean, I noticed your first question's on your questionnaire. I've already made my thing. You know, do you want to keep it within the county? And the answer for mine is absolutely. And it does not need to go to an outside because we need to keep this Franklin County, not an outside. That's, I think a lot of people shaking their head yes on that. Don't need to go out to an outside entity. It needs to stay within the county. If you need anything, everybody shaking their, Mr. Carter?
Yeah, just one thing about making a permanent date, Kevin. I think before you, we do that, you need to make sure that it's not conflicting with other Ag Fair-type events, cattle shows. Because there's a lot of things that go on that time of year. So you don't want to get in competition with some of the other events.
Even for vendors, Mr. Carter? When they get booked up for other events, yeah.
Yes, so the fair, that last year's fair and this year's fair will conflict with the Warren Street Historical Society and their annual Warren Street Event. And I've been in, in talks with the, the folks that are organizing that event. It may, that we can possibly work together, that vendors that would be going there on Saturday maybe would be at the fair for Wednesday, Thursday, Friday and would give them an opportunity to attend, you know, the Warren Street Festival on Saturday. But, but definitely taking a more comprehensive look to make sure. look to make sure. But with options, or with additional opportunities come additional options for dates and and things like that. But yes, there's any other questions or comments about the fair?
Just one more comment. I think it'd be great ultimately to have a master plan for what the facility looked like. And so as you did, well, little things like you're adding the hydrants, you realize, oh, they're part of the master plan. In the master plan, I realized I need hydrants here. And well, this year we're doing them. So I think it'd be not for to do that right away, but, you know, to have that on your list of things to do. So you you have a plan that you're working towards in the end.
Absolutely. And I think the folks from the Agricultural Development Board would would agree with that. Their biggest request in the presentation today would be to get that mission statement and to get those goals. And ultimately, at that September work session, if not sooner, to get some sort of commitment, whether it be a five or 10-year commitment to a location especially, but also that the fair would continue in Franklin County. That's another thing that they're going to be striving to look for, because they're not, if they're going to put the time and the money and the effort into to helping us build these facilities and and these programs, they want to make sure that it's going to have that longevity. So that, I think the comments today have been appreciated, and we'll go forward in in building that commitment and building that relationship with the agricultural community.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask you a question, please? Has there been discussion or is there any acknowledgement that we as a board, do we need to explore potential alternate locations for the fair here within the county? Or or is that a moot point? I don't know what you all have discussed in the past.
We haven't. There there were several years ago, I remember, I say several years ago, there were a few years back, when it started, the business park, there was talk of maybe moving the fair out there around the farmhouse and all of that. But then but then this discussion, you may have been on the board by then, then the discussion then is that probably wasn't a good idea, because we didn't need people, kids running in and out, or these trucks and all of that was going on. And I and I think it ended up as a consensus that there was plenty of room at the park for it and for it to grow and to stay there. And then and then there was some talk at one time about potentially going to the Smith Farm. But then it was the location, and it was sort of out of the way, or I'm not going to say out of the way, but it was more of harder to get to.
Well, we've got deed restrictions there as well.
Then you got some restrictions there. But, you know, I I think that, for my part to answer your question, I think of course, that's a good place, a good place, centrally located. And there is, I mean, you know, we we got some room there to 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 grow, already cut down a few trees, and went down there and they looked, it wouldn't take a whole lot to put that other building right beside the one that's there. And then the, from what Mr. Mitchell was talking about, to add on, when you go out there and look, something that came to my mind while we got there, Mr. Mitchell, when he was going back, and that that was that. The high school rodeo, if we could get them to to hold an event there with just the high school kids, that's what that is, that would be that would be astronomical. And I mean, that would be, it would be huge, going back to the mission statement with the education and everything. That would that would be huge there. And last year, she's not now because she graduated, but last year, my granddaughter was president of the high school rodeo. I mean, it's not beyond the rims to get to get that, at least to get the people there to participate. And, yeah, that that would be, that was a good idea. But that, and if y'all want to go, if you let me know, not this Saturday, but next Saturday, I can arrange it for you. But why are you, don't wear your good shoes, wear your dirty shoes. Don't wear your good shoes. So that, I'm sorry. Is that that answer? That's that's what that's what I remember. That's what I remember in the conversations.
Okay, thank you.
And the the other building that was there, gentlemen, it's back there to the back now, we're talking about the panels, you wouldn't have to put concrete, put the quarry dust in the sand because of the, you know, the animals don't go to the bathroom in in the bathrooms. And so, yeah, that it could be done right there. The facility's there.
Kevin, have y'all thought about all those new hydrants, if y'all have the water capacity to feed it all? Is that all off of one well or what?
It is. We we think we're okay. We've talked about that, to make sure we have capacity. And if it's in the current volume, I think I think it's more of a, not so much quantity. I think it's more of an accessibility of an issue right now. That's a good question. We thought the same thing, like, are we going to run dry? We have a, we should go buy a seat somehow. We have quite the system in the, in our office there that's got a huge capacity. So we think we're okay.
I was just going to suggest maybe putting in a a storage tank, like what some cattle producers have to do, you know, 12 o'clock in the middle of the day, cattle drinking more water, so they have a storage, it knocks it down. Well, then at night, the storage will build back up, and that's just a cheap way of doing it.
Okay, yeah.
That might be, it would be unfortunate to have a bunch of livestock down there, and all of a sudden, we don't have water.
Yeah, we didn't know what that happened.
A big problem.
That's all right, Ron. Sorry.
Didn't we need that porn money? But they they, did you not say that, what was it, Paul, said that, that when it midway come in there, that they had them bibs, and they had, and they put hooked up eight hoses to one to one hydrant?
They do. Now, whether they're all running at the same time or not is hard to tell. But the good thing with the the livestock is it won't be a constant water source. That it will probably be around the same amount of water that's used in a traditional fair. It's just having the access to it without having to split and compete over that water access.
And it was an astronomical amount of water that they needed for that snow cone machine.
Yeah, it constantly runs water.
Mr. Chairman, have we thought about doing a survey monkey poll of the citizens to see what what they would like to see at at a fair in Franklin County?
I hadn't heard anything about that.
Kevin, have you thought about doing something like that?
We have done a small sample of surveys at the fair, but I think if it's the pleasure of the board to do a more widespread, that way you would hit the folks who are coming to the fair and the folks that, you know, traditionally have not been to the fair, what they would be, if it's the pleasure of the board, we can definitely.
I'm not trying to create work. I'm just, you know, thinking, you know, are we hitting everything we need to hit? And if the citizens, I mean, if we want them to come, it would be nice to know if we're meeting their expectations.
Doesn't matter to me. I don't care. How much does something like it cost?
We can get back to you. I I don't I don't think it's going to be a, it it won't be a problem. I think we have internal resources that will be able to handle that.
Cool. Any more questions or comments for Mr. Tosh?
Thank you, Kevin.
You're welcome. Good presentation. Thank you. Y'all need a break, or you want to move right into Parks and Rec?
Keep rolling.
Break or go into Parks and Rec. Mr. Paul Chap, it's your turn, buddy.
Yeah, thanks for fitting me in. This is, I'll make sure this is enjoyable and keep you engaged. This is this is a great thing. This is Parks Recreation. That's our job is to be the fun department. So, yes, Chair members of the board, yeah, thank you so much for the time today. I I love talking about Parks Recreation. I think there's a lot of good things to share that are going on. So I was going to kind of give an overview and keep it casual. If there's any questions, feel free to interrupt me, and I'd be glad to answer anything. So I thought I'd start with just some things that just really happened in the last week or two, but this really builds into some of our requests and some of our pressures that we're feeling right now. So right now, you all, hopefully everyone's heard of River of Lights. It's that's that event we built out of COVID, that we built out of COVID. Essentially, we we hung up a bunch of Christmas lights over at Wade Park, and it went very, it was very popular. So we're doing it again this year, and we've already sold, this is in June, so we're just doing it just in one month, Fridays and Saturdays in June, about 3,000 tickets available. We've sold nearly half of them already. Crazy busy. But this is, I think, the part that I really like to share with you guys, is that on social media, and this is just Facebook, we had 7,000 shares, 18,700 comments. This is actually on Monday, so it's much higher than this now. 28,000, over 28,000 reactions. This is another one I like. Over 136,000 engagements. That means people clicked on it, liked it, shared it, or they clicked through there and went to like our tourism site and said, gosh, where's a good place I can spend the weekend? It's amazing. And I can't, I was talking to VBR about this earlier today. I can't wait to give you all the numbers about people that are from out of town that have attended this thing. It is, our phones have been ringing off the hook about people that have been traveling a long distance. It's this pleasant surprise that people are coming to this event. And this next number, I'm not making up. It looks like I'm making it up, though. There's over a million people this one event has reached. Just really impressive. I I just think this is just one of those ones that, for whatever reason, this just, you know, checks all the boxes. So it's a a great success. This is another one. This is one that we've talked about a number of times. I think it was mentioned at the last board meeting about youth athletics. And you all know all the benefits about youth athletics, about those kids on the court, about sportsmanship, teamwork, you know, physical fitness, all those kinds of things. I like this photo because the this player here is out of focus. I'm focusing on the participants. These are people that oftentimes are overlooked. I know you you all don't, but it's oftentimes overlooked about what a great community resource this is, what a huge multiplier. There's one kid there, but I bet you there's two parents, two grandparents, there's siblings, and just what a economic driver this is, what a community sense of pride this is, and just the benefits of that are secondary. They're just harder to track. So here's the number four attendance. And I know this has been mentioned a number of times. Yeah, our our attendance has just been growing and growing. We're just under 4,3883, I think is the number right now. And so athletics is just getting bigger and bigger, and we're just pleased about that. We had just this past weekend, we had the Easter egg hunt, the egg hunt festival. We're turning that more into a a full-day festival. And of course, the weather lined up, too. That was definitely part of it. But we had, get this, we had over 4,000 people there. We had, everyone knows Wade Park, the lower parking lot was full, the shelter, the the shelter parking lot was full, both field, those parking lots and the baseball field were full. People parked all the way up and down the road, all up to Pepper Road and down Pepper Road. It was very busy. And the sheriff's office, they had some of their citizen long patrol, they're helping out, and we were all busy. And what a what a great problem to have, all those, parking was a big issue this year. Another recent success, this one's coming up a week from tomorrow, and I know that you all have seen the invite, and hopefully many of y'all are able to come. But there's lots of community actions to start recreational, or there's livability, quality life programs, right, amenities in their sections of the county. But we have the Lovely Valley Loop Trail ribbon cutting. And there's been a ton of excitement. I'm sure you all have heard about it, about this trail coming in. And this is why I'm calling it. It is definitely, we have some gorgeous, pretty trails throughout Franklin County. But this one, if you haven't seen it, you need to go check it out. It is, it's just gorgeous. It crosses a couple creeks. There's some cool rock outcroppings, all this running cedar, these mature hardwood forests. It's amazing. So definitely going to be a huge benefit. So, yeah, these all these good things going on. So these are our pressures, but I'm not, these aren't problems. But, you know, we don't, Parks Recreation, we don't create problems for you guys. These are all good things to have. These are, we don't have bad problems. We have good problems. But, yeah, our parks, we're seeing kind of we're getting squeezed from both ends. We're seeing heavier use at our parks, and we love that. But we're also seeing an increased scope of our, like the Lovely Valley Loop Trail, we're seeing increased scope in our workload, too, and we love that. But we're like, more people, more projects, we're getting pretty well stretched. So that probably staffing is the thing that we are stretched on the the thinnest. And this is just some kind of average, just to, and I share this only to kind of let you all know, the expectation in other places, is that on average, a Parks and Recreation Department sees about 8.3 full-time equivalent staff per 10,000. So that'd be about 46 staff for Franklin County on average. So here we have 19, not 19 full-time staff, there's 16, two part-time, and and I go with all our part-time and one seasonal, that gives about 19 full-time staff equivalent. So if I were you guys, I'd be thinking, well, gosh, Franklin County, we work, we're twice as a Frank County employee versus a an employee from some other county. We're twice as good as they are. But even if you double that up, we're still not, you know, I'd be, what, 48%. We're still not, you know, quite there at average yet. So we're just, we're really stretched thin on staff.
All right. Let me ask you a question there. You've seen the new proposals and everything with the new budget and everything.
Yes, sir.
That brings it up, is that?
This is definitely a step in the right direction. It is great, yes. What what's proposed is, well, you all will, if those positions weren't funded, I think we'd probably have to reduce some things, which I hate to even think about those kind of things. But with this, with this, I think we'll be able to not only maintain what we have, but I think you'll see some noticeable improvements, like, I already have tons of ideas. You'll you'll see improvements across the board. So, yes, it's, we're in a good position.
Okay.
Yeah, this is current. It's like, I'm, to be honest, and totally transparent, I'm trying to give you all ammo and trying to support the budget as of now and what's presented. I think I'm fully in support of what's in there right now.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
One question. One of those new positions, Paul, is a recreational specialist, what does that entail?
So it is for, that's our catch-all term. We have that term that captures everybody, that pay grade, but it's really going to be for our athletics. And I have some metrics in here later on. I'll kind of circle back around to it, but I'll I'll jump ahead to it. We're really, we're pressed hardest on, we have, I'll, do you know what, I'll get to that here in just a second. I think it's it's really to help out with our coaching staff, because we have so many coaches, and they're such a resource. And if we don't maintain it, we're going to end up losing it. I think that might be, yeah, actually perfect timing, Mr. Carter. So, yeah, record high attendance, our athletics, this current fiscal year, we have 745 volunteer coaching positions. That's, you know, that's up, you know, our numbers are going up. We have more kids. That's a great thing. But we need, it takes more and more coaches. Last year, we had 622, which was much higher, 745. So we do some estimates per sport and that kind of thing. So that's 41,000 hours of volunteer service. That's $1.3 million in value. So, Mr. Carter, that position that you're asking about, this recreation specialist, it'll be for our athletic department, and it's really there to recruit volunteer coaches, retain them, train them, and and make sure our program continues to be strong, because it's, as you all know, volunteerism, it's just harder and harder to get volunteers, and it is harder and harder for us. We we don't want to turn kids away. We want, we want to always have a team for everybody. So this one sure that happens.
Thank you, Mr. Carter, for me. Mr. Chairman, I had the same question Mr. Carter had, and thank you for your answer. I just, to tag on to that, does this position also work on the scheduling aspect of all of these league events?
They'd probably be a backup and overlap person, but they generally, this position probably would not oversee the scheduling.
So is it just to make sure that volunteers are recruited and retained?
That'd be their main thing. Yeah, here's some, here's some other things that I'm hoping to have them bleed into. But it's, that's going to be their main focus, for sure. I'm hoping they can work with also with like sportsmanship, coaching. That's one of the things I think we're, it's often one of the biggest challenges is like about with, I try to put this nicely, one of the biggest things is just about parents and spectators, that kind of thing. And so hopefully, this will be, there'll also be the element of training spec, parent spectators on how to properly cheer on their parent, their their teammates, how to be supportive, and those kind of things. That'd be another aspect of it. Hoping to, I've got tons of different ideas for this position with the perfect candidate.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you.
So will they have a gun or?
I was one of those parents back in the day. I was an excitable mom. I was one of those parents back in the day. I was an excitable mom.
Uh, another pressure, aging services, um, I just feel like I should mention this as well. If you go over the Essex Center, the place is always busy, it's active. You know, we've talked about that whole silver tsunami that's becoming. Well, it's here. And really we're seeing more and more seniors that aren't wanting to stay home and watch Wheel of Fortune. They're wanting to get out and about and engaged with their, uh, with their community. And so we're seeing like record attendance also at Essex Center. I pulled up our attendance numbers just through this year. And, um, even this year, it's, we have, we've had over thirty-two thousand, uh, people this fiscal year, which was a twenty-nine percent increase from last year. And you know, it, gosh, you all talking about with, with the fair, you know, we are kind of like your, um, we, we produce a lot of the product. We're the backbone to, the, the weight to, um, making, making these events happen. You know, the Ag Fair, the River Lights, Concerts by Canoe, um, Land of Lights, all these things. We love doing that.
How did that Land of Lights go this year?
Oh, yeah, we, it went great. We had a few, if you remember, it pretty much every weekend was rainy this past year. So our attendance was, I think, just a little bit down from last year, but it was still busy and popular and people loved it. It was, yeah. Yeah, huge success. We had tons of, yeah, a big outpouring. People, people, all good things. Sports marketing, gosh, I see more and more of a need for that. There's, we're on a conference call with VBR. We're hoping to, um, we have a site visit on April thirtieth with, for another mountain bike race. We hope that's fruitful. But it, you know, takes some staff to put those events on, and we want to make those things happen. I guess too, I, I thought about this being another good pressure and that we oftentimes talk about like the lodging and meals taxes. But all these things really, this thing that gets me most excited is about like this community pride. People love it when there's a great Ag Fair and they're talking to their friends and family about the blue ribbon that they won. Or at the Land of Lights and that they went through there and did you see that, they're, they're talking about the new exhibit that went up. It's just, there's community pride and being proud to say that you're from Franklin County. Yeah, so there's three positions that are in the budget right now are, um, for a park maintenance worker. One that is another maintenance worker, but really to help us out with our outdoor assets. And that last one is, um, we mentioned earlier, was youth athletics. So yeah, that's Parks and Recreation in a nutshell about some of our pressures. I just kind of touched base on our two operational, um, requests there. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you all might have about our proposed budget.
Mr. Carter?
Yeah, just, just a quick question, Paul. I was curious about that social media response to River of Lights. Do you all do that as a sponsored ad, or how did you get that kind of response?
That is a good question. We do. We do pay, um, for many of our programs, we do the, you can pay a couple dollars and, and have them boosted, and we do that. We, for some reason, the algorithm loves that event. And I, I think we're all kind of scratching. I'm looking at Kevin a little bit. I think we're all scratching. Why, is it a great event? Does it? I'm not quite sure. I wish I knew the answer, because I'd have that for all of our programs.
Huge, that's a huge amount of numbers for a social media post. I was, I was just curious how you achieved that.
Uh, I wish I knew. I would, I, I'm impressed and excited about it, but I, if I could, I wish we did for all of our programs, but.
And Mike said that, because I was looking on Facebook the other day, and a friend of mine that doesn't live anywhere around here, shared the post about that. I was talking about how they were gonna go to it, and I was like, what in the world are they worried about going to? What are they doing? But I, so it's just, it's funny that I saw that the other day and then it's mentioned here.
Yeah.
Yeah, when I was in business and we would do those sponsored ads, if we got four thousand hits or something, that was huge. So that, I mean, that's, that's amazing numbers.
Yeah, I, I'd like to, I think for some reason the Facebook algorithm likes it, but I think this thing is really truly unique. I don't think there's anything like it around. I guess I don't want to underplay the unique thing about this. I mean, it, it kind of hits all the, everything that's great about Franklin County. It's our waterways, it's, 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 um, it's tubing. It's, you know, it's a very, you know, rural thing to do. It's, and it's pretty. It's, I don't know anybody else that does this program, so.
Paul, what time is the ribbon cutting again, just before?
I believe I have it here on, uh, it's the next slide. It's, it's, it's at noon. Yes, sir.
I'm not sure I have the right time.
Yeah, here it is.
Twelve o'clock.
Yeah, I've been hearing lots of, um, buzz about that. I think there'll be a, a good turnout for that ribbon cutting.
Any more questions or comments, Mr. Carter?
That just brings up another, just a comment. I was down that way recently, and that house there on the Smith Farm is looking pretty sad. Uh, there's a lot of vines growing on it. Uh, we, we need to maybe take a look at cleaning that place up a little bit, because a lot of people go by there on the way to the four-H Center, and it, it, it looks sort of bad. It's right there on the side of the road. And there's a lot of, um, I don't remember if it was machinery or hay rolls or something sort of piled up around it. We need to clean that up a little bit.
Let me know that we, this past year, we went there and did some landscaping around there. We sent some of our park staff out there to cut some of those vines and that kind of thing, but it, it could use a little bit, another facelift, yeah.
Mr. Quinn?
I would, uh, it's interesting to hear about all of the, uh, people that you're getting to come, you know, the attendance records and all. And it's, um, I think about some of the things I've posted with different events, and, and I always am getting the comment, oh, I didn't know about this. And, you know, and so it's, it's making me ponder, how do you better promote things? And it doesn't seem like you need to do that, but, but based on the response I get for different events, people are wondering like, how do I learn about this stuff? Because they're learning about it at the last minute. So I, I, it's not, I'm just, it's just a thought, uh, for you.
It is, it is often puzzling, like, how do you not know about this event? This is a, you know, key event or, you know, whatever. I'm not sure which one you're talking about. But I, I've heard that a number of times. I, I hear that, uh, just talking to somebody yesterday about the Essex Center. They just learned about the Essex Center. How, how are you just now hearing about this? You know, we have a, a kind of a small marketing budget. We, we try to do the best we can, like with the, the playbook and social media, you know, banners. It's kind of the shotgun approach, but, um.
It's called a PIO.
I know.
We need a PIO.
And so with, uh, Reba had the dog, dog park fundraiser last weekend, and, and I just posted it kind of at the last minute. But I had a number of people that came in and say, well, how's, how, how could I have learned about this? I just learned about it now. It's too late. It was sold out two weeks ago, but it, that's just an example of an event I'm saying that I posted that people were wondering, how do they learn about it?
Anyone else? Any more questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
All right, we'll take a, uh, thank you for your interest. All right, now, before we adjourn, we've got a couple of things we need to discuss. Talked to Mr. Whitlow, well, even as early as today. We, we, uh, we got the public hearing coming up on Monday. And it's to hear what the citizens say, how they feel about the tax rates that have been proposed. We do not have to make a decision on that and give them an answer on Monday, staff. But we will have to by the sixteenth. That's the latest that we can procrastinate, because the tickets have to be, the, has to be written up. Uh, Ms. Torrance, Commissioner, has to get those papers and they have to be sent out. So we have to do that. Now, we can talk about how we feel about the budget that has been presented to us, Mr. Whitlow, and staff's budget a little bit tonight. Now there's time, and, and, and we can allot that time in the, uh, for the agenda on the sixteenth, that we can discuss it, but a decision has to be made on the sixteenth. That's the latest that we could, now, the budget doesn't have to be done at that time. We've got another month or six weeks on the budget before that can be done, but the tax rate has to be, we have to vote on it on the sixteenth. Now, we can wait until then to do that, or if, and don't throw nothing at me, I'm just telling you our options. If it's another workshop that we've got to do between now and then, uh, you've got to have how long to announce for the, announce for a workshop and, what, seven days, isn't it?
It's three days.
Huh?
It's three, three business days.
Three business days, okay. So if we have to do another workshop to do that, but, uh, I'm just putting you, telling you the options are out there. And how do you feel? I know that each one of you's probably got thoughts in your mind on where you'd like to see the, uh, the tax rate set. Uh, Mr. Whitlow and staff has told us that, uh, it's pretty bare, bare minimum. I didn't bring those papers with me, but it was like, it was balanced on like thirty-some, uh, point thirty-some percent there of the revenue. And we're getting close to where we're gonna have to start cutting, uh, uh, services, if it gets down to that and how much that is. So, uh, you know the options that are out there. You read these books just like I do. You've got your own thoughts on where you want to see the tax rate. If it's the flat at forty-one or go up as high as forty-five, we cannot go no higher than that. So I'm gonna open it up, the floor up now. You heard, heard that. Each one of you's got your own thoughts, I'm sure. And I would like to hear from you on, uh, on how you want to do it, if you think that, uh, with the information you got and what you have in your mind. I'm not gonna ask you that today. I think that's unfair to everybody to ask where you think it needs to go. But it's gonna be up to us if we go less to tell staff where we're gonna have to make cuts and where we're gonna have to come up with the money. So I, I'll start with, uh, Mr. Taylor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to commend Chris and staff on the proposed budget. I think that it was very well thought out and very well, uh, organized and, and done. And for me, I, if we took a vote right now, I could, with clear conscience, vote for the budget as proposed with the forty-five cent tax rate. However, um, I would like to see if we can make it work without, uh, cuts into county services. If we could go lower, lower is, would be better. And the range that I'm at is between forty-five and forty-three. I would like, you know, if we can look at whether it's the school, um, you know, they told us that they're saving two million dollars by closing two schools. Why not let the citizens of the county enjoy that two million dollar savings? And, uh, I'm just gonna leave it at that.
Mr. Smith, let me go to you. Let's go down this way first.
Can I defer, can I defer for a moment?
Sure.
Quinn?
Really, my comments are the same that I made back on March fifth, and that's that I, the non-school portion of the budget has gone up seventeen percent or thirteen million dollars. And for me, that, I can't defend that kind of increase to the constituents, that a, a year-over-year increase of seventeen percent with the non-school portion of the budget. Uh, on the school portion, I mentioned, uh, previously, I think the schools made a tough decision this year to close the school, two of the schools. I'm, I'm, uh, very supportive of trying to complete that phase-two compensation study to get the teachers back, uh, well, another third of the way towards the right step. And I'm fearful that if you cut the school budget at all, that we would lose that ability to implement their phase-two. So I'll start, stop there. Thanks.
Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'm torn about this year's tax rate because representing the town of Rocky Mount, some close to five thousand souls, um, I think the, the town is gonna hold their thirteen cent per hundred tax rate, which is gonna put an undue burden on, on a lot of my constituents if I vote for the full forty-five cents. As far as the school budget, I think there's, it could be cut. My concern is we have no control over the money once it's spent. And I agree with what Dan said. I would like to see them be able to do the phase-two compensation study, but my fear is if we cut their budget, they're, they're gonna cut the teacher pay. They're not gonna take it from anywhere else. Uh, and, and that's sort of where I'm at. I, I'm really, uh, torn and undecided. I, I think I want to wait till the public hearing, and I want to hear what the general public has to say. And I know like the rest of you, all I go to the grocery store and you spend forty or fifty bucks and you got two bags of stuff. AEP, the electric rates are through the roof. It's, it's ridiculous. And the, the people that, uh, struggle typically are really struggling now, and to burden them with a massive tax increase, I, I, I'm not gonna be able to do that.
Sorry, Mr. Mitchell?
Whether it's schools, fire trucks, county administration, sheriff's office, public safety, parks and rec, it all comes at a, at a price. And, um, I'm with what Dan said, uh, seventeen percent is a lot of growth. It's, and we have to consider the, the money we've already gotten on personal property over the last few years. I'm at forty-three cent. Uh, cuts aren't easy to make. But they can be done.
Jumps?
I would like to see it cut, and Chris, y'all have done a great job. Don't get me wrong. Everything's there. But hearing from the citizens we've been hearing from and getting calls from now, uh, I think we owe to them to do what we can to cut it down, so. I, biggest thing to look at, I think, is like everybody else says, is the school. And what you said, Mike, is true. If we, we hold, we cut their budget, they're gonna probably go back to their, uh, comp study and pay to the teachers. But I look at it this, if they do that, that pretty much shows where their priorities are. I mean, so I'm sure there's everything, other things that they can look at in their budget and cut. We had, uh, last year, uh, they didn't, we had the same budget to them as we did this year, proposed budget. They had a one point two million overage, and with the cuts they've made and adjustments they've made, I would have a hard time thinking why they would need it this year. So I'm looking at, I'm, I'd like to see it somewhere around four, four to three.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that, um, without question, um, my thinking lies very much with my colleagues, which, you know, I'm, I'm glad to see that we're all kind of of like mind within a, you know, a cent or two of, of the rate. I would be happy, uh, with forty-three cents. Forty-four would be optimal for me, because my fear is the lower we go, we are going to have to raise taxes again in, in a few years ahead, that are ahead of us. So I fear taking the rate too low. Um, but our citizens are hurting. And, um, constituents across this county, including my district, you know, they're hurting. These assessments are just a bubble, and they have been very detrimental to everybody in this county. So I feel a responsibility, um, to mitigate that, that terrible burden that's been placed due to the reassessments um, while we're trying to, uh, protect county services. And I think that's the inherent balance that we're charged with as elected officials. So, um, bottom line for me, um, I, I'm sitting between forty-three and forty-four cents. And it would depend, uh, for me upon where, um, those reductions would be suggested, um, by the board working with, with, uh, county administration.
Well, for my part, I'm gonna say basically everything that echoed what everybody else is saying. I have no qualms about going to forty-four cent. I can talk in, can be talked into forty-three cent pretty easy. Uh, I think that, uh, the savings can be, uh, I think the school board has, has, has done well in what they've done with the closing of the two schools and trying to save money. But I still have some heartburn when every time they say something, they say, teachers, teachers, teachers. And if you'll remember the chart that we've got, uh, and I did not bring mine with me, but it was like the top three numbers were like the teachers, the L, LECP or something to that effect. And it showed their pay, pay scale, and then it was G one through G fifteen. And that was the, uh, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, people in the garage, you know, support, those, those types of supports. They have no, no problem at all with their proposed three percent raise. And then from, uh, fifteen up or down, the administrators, you know, I, I think a one percent raise is there. But to math, the numbers are gonna be about the same because of the money that they're making. And then I think, uh, you know, And then I think, uh, you know, we've really done well, uh, with the equipment that we bought, uh, fire trucks and, and buying those, uh, amylances to be, uh, refurbished and, and all of that. Uh, I think there's, uh, if, if we've got to cut, you know, we, we, we got to pick and choose and do it properly. I do not want to see, uh, when Mr. Whitlow was telling us before, and I, and I have to commend him and staff for the work that they put and the time that they put into it because I know a lot of times they were burning the midnight oil and we're giving them more work right now and what we're telling them, but we're getting my, a head start on what's coming. Uh, I don't want to see services cut where an, an office is closed for four days and then our people are losing the day's pay. Uh, and that's not, that's not right. You know, we've gotten to a point now, you know, we kicked this can down the road and we done that market study. In the last couple of years, we've bodied up. I don't want to see us go backwards. I want to see us to continue to go forward. So I think that, uh, I know that's, that's putting some more there, but, uh, I think you're getting a, uh, an idea of where the board feels like we need to go or we're looking at. I do not think, now here's, here's another question that I'm presenting to the board for where we're at. We do not have to make a decision Monday night after the hearing. I mean, we can if we want to, but we do not have to. But by the sixteenth, our next meeting, we do have to. Now, with that being said, we can make the agenda light on the sixteenth so that we can have plenty of time to talk and, and make some decisions if we have to be specific on where cuts are to be made. Or if you want to have a work session, another work session between now and the sixteenth. I'm going to open that up to the board and, uh, you guys tell us. I think everybody has made their, I think everybody has made their, uh, what they, they had to say to, to be said. Now, keep in mind, if we have another work session, that Mr. Jamison, he asked us to do this on the eighth because he has plans all next week.
I'll be back by the sixteenth, though. If we, I'll be, I would be here for the sixteenth meeting.
You'll be here for the meeting on the sixteenth?
Yes, sir.
But from the ninth on, you're gone.
I'm gone till the following Sunday.
So we have to keep that in mind. So he will be gone.
Why don't we plan for a light agenda, like you said, on the sixteenth? And then if we need the time for discussion, whatever we can.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask staff, uh, Mr. Whitlow, how would that affect y'all if, I mean, would it?
We, we can, we can make that work, uh, Mr. Jamison, um, members of the board. We can, we can make that work. Y'all, y'all have given us some parameters here and I think we can, um, we, we can, gives us some time to look at some things between now and the sixteenth and I think have a meaningful discussion and, with the board.
How about the rest of you?
I'm fine with the sixteenth, back in the light agenda.
One thing from a, a process point of view, Ronnie, I'm just thinking, you could figure out at what point you have four votes. I'm, uh, maybe I'm oversimplifying, but say at forty-four, you have four votes. Well, that's, that's a rate that is agreeable to the majority of the board. It seems like you could get to that, uh, even next Monday.
I'd be for handling it next Monday, too. I think everybody already knows where they're at.
That's two for next Monday to, to do that, so.
I'm all right with that. I mean, like I said, either, either day is fine with me.
Me too. Monday, if y'all want to vote Monday, I'm fine with that.
Staff will make, you know, whatever works, you know?
As long, as long as Chris says staff's ready, I'm fine with it.
It certainly helps, you know, the, the sooner we can give the rate to the commissioner and the treasurer, you know, the more they had time they have to process everything, so.
Sounds like, sounds like there's a consensus that we're going to take a vote on it Monday. So if we, if you got questions or something, uh, you're going to have to get them to staff, uh, before Monday. So it sounds like then after the meeting on Monday, uh, that's going to give, that's going to give us some homework between now and then because I know, I know each and every one of you are compassionate about this as I am and going to have to go back and study. Because I, I'm, I'm serious and, and I know y'all are too. I do not want to see, I do not want to see an office closed and staff member lose a day's pay. I do not want to see that. Oh, that, that, that's just not acceptable. And, but, but we, if, if, if everybody, I mean, I, I know right now what you were talking about a while ago. I know you would get four on forty-four. I think it's, I think everybody would be on the forty-four cent. And I, I'm not so sure that you can't get four for forty-three. But, uh, but I know that, I know that's there. That can be said, period. Uh, right out off the, right off the bat on that. Answer, to answer your question, Mr. Quinn.
Mr. Chairman, I will just, if I may.
Sure.
Just.
Now, if you got, I want everybody, if you've got something to say, say it.
Just anecdotally, um, in terms of the gravity of, of this decision, uh, this, this is keeping me up at night. Uh, and it has been since we got our budget book. Because, um, I, I know, and I've seen, you know, our citizens are struggling. And I know that we're not the only source of struggles. We all, you know, have those AEP, increased bills and groceries and all. Um, but yet we're taxed with, you know, no pun intended, of course, to run the county. And, um, I just, you know, when, when I start thinking about increases, tax increases, when I look at things like CSA costing us a million more dollars in the upcoming budget, a million more dollars that we didn't have to do last year. And when I look at a six-hundred-thousand-dollar requirement of new money for the regional jail, when I look at, when we get faced here in a year or two with SROs going to require another new million-plus dollars, perhaps, if the, uh, state doesn't do something. Um, and the other mandates, unfunded mandates that are going to be coming. There's no question about that. Um, when I think about just the nature of the types of increases that we see in our budget book, that we literally have no control over landfill, the closure of the landfill cell, um, and all the requirements that go with that, um, and opening a new cell, and just things that aren't readily visible and seen by the general public when it comes to where their tax dollars are going. Because I have to answer that question a lot. You know, where are my tax dollars going? I don't, I don't see we're getting anything. And, and I, I can explain that. My problem is, is that these reassessments, I'm not hearing so much from my constituents about the tax rate. It's about the reassessment process. The reassessment process has become the root of all evil, uh, right now. And, um, and I don't disagree with that. And so, you know, I work real hard to try to set a distinction between the tax rate and the reassessments, but at the end of the day, they, they intersect and the rate is going to drive how much taxes, of course, our folks are paying. And, um, I don't know, it is so difficult to sit up here and look at these types of increases that we have no choice but to deal with and know we're going to need money to do it because we've kicked the can down the road now for a couple of decades. And we're there, our backs are against the wall. It is the hardest thing in the world to try to tell our citizens, um, in order to keep their services in place. I feel like we, we have tightened down, since I've been on the board, we've tightened down each and every year to the point that we balanced our budget last year with interest income. That is not a place for locality to live in a fiscally conservative, uh, budget, even, even at that rate. So I just wanted to share some of those thoughts with you because they're the internal struggles that I have in trying to balance the care and the welfare of our citizens, the services we need to deliver. Um, and we are, I could, I, I brag about this board all the time. We are very, um, conscientious about being cost efficient and I think that our staff knows that. And we try to get the biggest bang for the buck. But these reassessments have been a bubble and they've driven us into an environment that is unfair to our citizens. It's unfair to us with the decisions we have to make. So we've got to find a sweet spot, if you will, and make a decision that tries to take some, put some, and inject some support in both arenas. And I just wanted to share my personal thoughts with you about that because that really, it, it is really kind of capturing the struggle that I'm going through in trying to set a tax rate.
Anyone else? The only thing that I would add to what, uh, Ms. Smith said is, uh, I feel like all of our feelings are probably along those lines, uh, from the phone calls that I've gotten from you all and from the citizens. And one of the things that, uh, in the past that our budget has been balanced on a whole lot is the federal monies that we've been getting from grants and everything from the COVID epidemic. We've lost that after this year. It's gone. So that's another thing that, that we're having to deal with. And then as it was alluded to by a couple of the members earlier, the SROs that are coming up, they're, every one of those fifteen positions are on the grants. And they, they're going to start, uh, well, one of them's already run out. And, you know, the schools and the town and the county has picked them up already. So all of that, all of that's coming up too. So in, uh, the only thing that I can e-echo other, you know, it's talking about, uh, AEP, but, uh, my insurance went up, uh, on my real estate and on my vehicles. Everybody shaking their head, they're good too. So, so we're getting hit all the way around with everything. And the folks, the citizens, and I know a lot of them do it, it's affecting this board as well. I mean, we, we, we live in the same world everybody else lives in. So, yeah, it's, it's difficult times. And I too have stayed up at night thinking about this thing and going there and getting the books and looking through them and just reading the same numbers over and over. They don't change. Every time you read them, it's the same numbers.
See, Mr. Chairman, I, 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 I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
So when you think, that, that's, that's the reality of where we're at today, that, uh, uh, we're in a, in a, in a place in our world today that we've never been before because our world's never been here. And the world we used to live in and grew up in, it's not coming back. It's not here. So that's, that's pretty much all I've got to say. Ms. Smith, you had something else?
Yeah, I, I had asked, um, at one of our past recent meetings to try to quantify what dollar amount would be if we reduce the personal property tax by six cents, down to, down to two dollars and thirty-five cents, which equates to Bedford's rate, given the increase we saw last year. Did we ever get a number on that, Mr. Whitlow?
We did. It, um, for each penny, it's about eighty thousand. So, um, the math, it's about almost half a million, four hundred and eighty thousand, half a million.
Thank you.
So the value increase of a penny, uh, now is still around a million dollars, is any tax increase?
About a million, million-two, mil, million-one, I think was the reassess, approximately.
Yeah, about a million, a million fifty thousand, so, estimated.
That's a penny tax increase. All right, is that anything else to anyone? Has everybody got a clear conscience? All right, then the, uh, we will be adjourned until April the eighth, that's this coming Monday, at six o'clock.